Six oh two, if you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will please remain standing for the invocation, Reverend Prothers.
Let's pray together. Almighty God, we come before you this evening and we just want to praise you for the very fact that you've given us the inalienable rights that allow us to come together as a community, participate in a democracy. Lord, we are so thankful for the bounty and blessings that you have given us in every aspect of our lives in this nation and in this community. Lord, we come tonight and we especially would like to ask your blessings, first upon this council, as they lead this community and the government and the process of that government, just care for them, look after them and their families. Give them the wisdom that they need. And of course, Lord, for those that are out there that are sworn to protect and serve or police and are fire, we just especially pray you protect them in their jobs, bring them safely home to their families each and every day. And Lord, we just pray again that you would provide for them in each way possible. Lord, our city employees and the various ways that they serve and take care of the city, look after them and their families as well. Lord, we know that throughout this community like this, there are always those who are hurting, who are sick, who are suffering, who may be lonely, and Lord, we would pray that their friends, their family, their neighbors, and the churches in this community would be able to minister to those needs and encourage them and strengthen them. Thank you now, Father. I ask all the things that I do this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Michael, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos has asked for the excuse, Mayor. Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Madam Protamnick.
Here.
Treasurer Estimer.
Present.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr.
Thank you.
Any corrections or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March twenty-sixth.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Allen Park, students. Councilman Valerius, I do apologize. I have a long report. It is boring. But hopefully some information will be worthwhile for everybody. Just a reminder that there is the MDOT construction on Southfield Road from Pinecrest Drive to Ford Road that's going to start April twenty-ninth. Mentioned that last time. It's going to last until October fifteenth. It's going to be a mess over there. I think it's down to one lane, some weekend closures. I have an item that I actually put into your packet that I handed out. I'll bring that back at the next council meeting, and that's a request to waive the noise ordinance. We've done that for I-75. I believe we also did it for M-39 project before as well. So they can do some weekend work in the nighttime as their plan for that. One project that started yesterday with Wayne County was Pelham Road. That's a project from E Course Road to Van Born Road. It is expected to be completed by the fall of 2024. The project consists of point nine-four miles of pavement repairs, concrete base course repairs, HMA cold mill, that's a hot mix asphalt, cold milling, resurfacing, drainage adjustments, driveway approach placement, concrete work, ADA work, turf, pavement marking signage. During the construction, one lane in each direction will remain open at all times. This is where it's going to get messy if you haven't already gone through there. Traffic utilizing Pinecrest Road to access Pelham Road will be restricted from left turn movements during construction. So no left turns from Pinecrest onto Pelham at all. Reek Road construction, I'll go down to the one that, when Reek Road is fully closed at Goddard Road, so if you have tried to get through there, that's also closed. That road work started last week with the staging of the equipment. They started doing underground work. That is now complete. They're removing the old concrete and asphalt as we, as this week goes through and probably ready to pour sometime in the next week and a week and a half. They are starting at Maylon and working their way north towards Wick Road, and they're on the east side of Reek at this time. We don't have a date yet for the restoration of the area between Reek Road and the creek, for Reek Road between the creek and the Goddard, but once we have that, we'll let everybody know here and the residents will be made aware of that as well. Pinecrest Drive project is scheduled to begin mid to late May. So if it wasn't like we had enough issues going on over there with Pelham and M-39, Pinecrest is going to be into it as well. I don't know how you're going to get it now.
I'm going to be blacked in.
I have no idea. I apologize. As I talked to the gentleman from MDOT, it's got to get done. Unfortunately, the window of construction time in the state of Michigan is very small, and this unfortunately is the consequences. Champagne Park, work on the baseball fields. That was Diamonds Two and Three. It was nearly finished. I know they were wrapping up some stuff today. They finished up today, apparently. Construction of the walking path did start yesterday, and they should be in there within about two weeks to begin the parking lot reconstruction, weather permitting. So we're excited to see that moving forth. DDA streetlight project, you have, we mentioned this earlier, there's some, the poles will be in stage at the old show property. They've got a project that's going to be putting new decorative streetlights on Allen Road and Park Avenue. Allen Road from Southfield to Roosevelt, E Course, Allen Road intersection. So that's going to start here in the next few weeks. They did a walkthrough on Friday. It seemed like everything went well. They'll be starting probably mid to, end of April, I believe is the rough timeline. And it looks to be maybe eight to ten weeks, again, weather permitting for that as well. We have a shred day styrofoam collection that'll be Saturday, April twentieth. They will be held in the parking lot behind Prestige, Banquet Hall, Culvers, PNC Bank. The time for that event is nine o'clock to twelve PM. If you don't have your stuff ready for this event, we got one coming up in October, and that'll be October twelfth. We're going to do a spring and a fall, and we'll just get those scheduled as we go through for the future times. I don't know what the next May, April will be. And honestly, once the Michigan football schedule comes out, then I'll tell you what the October schedule will be. Right, Eric? Deputy Chief Taylor said that's good as well for him. The fitness center walking track will be closed for maintenance the week of April twenty-second from five to close. They're going to be doing some maintenance on that track that is necessary, but they need to have everybody off so they can make that happen, and that's ours. It seemed to be better. Not going to be better for everybody, but better for most. We got a budget work session review on the proposed 2024-25 budget on Tuesday, May seventh, six o'clock. I believe Amanda did pass out those budget packets today to you. Work session for that. And then just an update on the American Bloom CN Rail grant that we received for the historical museum for the landscaping. The, I did receive an email from the director, and they're looking to do a media event like we did for the Champagne Park, Rand Park facility projects last year. That'll be on Thursday, June sixth, at three o'clock. We're following the Royal Oak event, so they're going to be doing Royal Oak at one o'clock and I'll be in here in Allen Park at three o'clock. As I mentioned, the noise ordinance waiver, I'll have that for the next meeting. I got that yesterday. We'll put that on the agenda for the twenty-third. That'll work for them, for MDOT. And then I did get some bad news from the state of Michigan this morning. We did not get awarded the Financially Distressed Communities Villages and Township Grant applications. We'd applied for the removal of the underground storage tanks behind the fire station and also for lead water service replacements. We did not get either one of those. I have not been able to find what was awarded yet, but once I have that, I'll share that as well. It's just out of curiosity. That's all I have.
I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We'll now move to public comments. We have four minutes. All we want is your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide the full address and be civil in your comments. Thank you.
My name is Jane Curry. I live on St. Mary's. I apologize for my contact with the police. I'd like to know why the taxpayer of paying polydollar installments for three years or seven years that eavesdrop on guests, the community center. It is in private and public areas. What I had just said is $10,000 installments for cameras that eavesdrop on guests, employees and visitors. Two years ago, the HR committee, which many of you are on, had requested for this to be disabled, and that was ignored. The current director gives codes out to people under eighteen years of age to view the camera and eavesdrop on guests. Employees are eavesdropped on and retaliated on even for posting campaign signs on their lawn that this is something that you can't do. There has been a longstanding culture of retaliation at the community center of employees, very longstanding culture. I'd like to know why the police haven't been brought in to investigate and prosecute offenders. There is a complete lack of leadership, oversight, and accountability. When employees complain to HR, they are ignored and taken off the schedule. There is no handbook given, no policy and procedure. The roof has leaked for over five years when it was fixed. Buckets are just put out, I guess, hoping people don't fall and fracture. We need a civil service commission again. I would like to know, are members going to be refunded at the fitness center as they find out that they are being eavesdropped on when they bring their families in there? I am looking forward to the cop and council meeting on the eighteenth. I think anything that can be done to engage citizens and citizen input is greatly needed and has been lacking for some time. Gail, I would appreciate you not commenting. I have no ability to rebut, and I would appreciate you not making a comment on what I am saying, much of which you are very well aware has been going on. Thank you so much.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor, Ray McGus and Quant. Couple questions. I want to go ahead and I want to thank the seven employees from the DPW that came to my, across the street from me and removed two trees. They were very, very efficient. There were seven of them. They did a great job. They went ahead and they knocked down one tree. It took them a little longer. That's because they had to stage all their equipment. The next tree, they knocked it down pretty efficient. Those trees were really, starting to really be in bad shape. But one thing I noticed, I couldn't tell who the boss was. There was no micromanaging. They knew their job. They did it very professionally. No one was leaning on a shovel, and nobody was leaning on a broom. They cleaned up. They got rid of their stuff. And the gentleman that was up in the air proceeded to cut some more branches down. They worked in a very, very safe way. So I want to commend them right now. Doesn't usually happen. I also would like to go ahead and thank the individuals that went ahead and was working down at the foot of Southfield to cleaning up what they, Wayne County should have been cleaning up. I've been saying this for quite some time. I have no idea who those individuals were, none whatsoever. And I wish you, as City Council, would start to go ahead and look at Facebook. And I'm not condemning any of you. I'm just saying now is the time to go ahead, since we are under and being videoed, that you can go ahead and thank the individuals who are out there working for nothing. They put their heart and soul into this city, and it was probably another commission. It could have been the Beautification Commission, all I knew. But this is what needs to be happening at some of these meetings. There should be a time in this area on this agenda where we go ahead and we do that. Keep the citizens informed. You're going to be passed in a resolution to go ahead and go ahead and pass some money, to go ahead and take care of a wall and concrete and asphalt, and to go ahead and clean up another area that should have been cleaned up before and grass, the white grass there should have been put down. And it's coming out of a fund. Through the chair, Mark, I was at the meeting, okay? I have no idea. I know where this money's coming from. So can you go ahead and tell the citizens where this money's coming from? Maybe they won't be on Facebook trying to figure out, did we hit the lottery again? And with that, you have a great day. Stay safe, okay? Enjoy this weather, you know, and just have, just take care of ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Jane Flamed Kittle. I know that you're not supposed to ask questions, but I have a couple of concerns, so if you could just tell me, I can find the answers afterward. I would just appreciate it. During a work meeting, there was comments about, even though it's written in our charter that fifteen thousand above, it's grandfathered in, or it's approved because the gentleman's already in the city. I could not find any amendment to state that. I understand you want to get this done, but we need to follow the charter. To charter states, you have to have sealed bids, be right out loud, and the lowest bidder will get it. It may be this gentleman who gets it, but no matter what, you have to follow the charter. I'd like to ask you to postpone voting on this until next week, until you can look at the charter and see if there was amendment. I could not find one. It doesn't seem like there was one. It wasn't mentioned. I'd also like to know what happened to Wayne County grant that was supposed to go for that area. A couple of meetings ago, there was a lady by the first name of Brenda who came up and asked, and it was commented that you hadn't heard back yet. Has anybody heard back yet? Is there any information? Well, if you haven't heard back, come see me. I got the answer for you. They have denied your grant because it never went in front of the board because it was one of two things. The administrator either didn't feel it was be put in front of the board, or it was pulled. I would assume if the administrator-
Let me interrupt you for one moment, please. That is totally incorrect. I don't know where you got that information from, but I will not have you speaking at this meeting. They had received it. It was in their possession. We are not going to get the grant simply because Wayne County has decided to spend their money in a different manner.
Okay.
But I was in contact with our commissioners, and you are absolutely wrong.
Okay, it was, it was two things. It was never put in front of the commissioners to vote on.
Please, I will not-
Pardon, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I will, I-
Excuse me, there will be no comments from the audience.
That's okay.
There is no interplay here. I am not going to allow falsehoods to be sent here. That material was sent to them. They had it in their possession.
Yes, Wayne County did. I said that.
And that is all that is done with it.
I just said it didn't go in front of the commission.
We have no control over that.
No, no, I understand. I never said that. I never said that.
I would, I would ask that we just allow Ms. Kittle to finish her comments, and then we can address those in our, in our own comments.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I mean, I didn't say that. I'm not saying that. I know it went to Wayne County. I understand that. It just never made it in front of the commission, is what I'm telling you. I'd like to know if you finally heard back to where they said, no, they're not giving it to you. That's all. And then, why, and why isn't the DDA paying for this section of the Dollar Show, as you call it? It's their property, their possession. I understand that's what the DDA is for. That's just a general question. I'm just trying to understand everything. And then the ARPA stuff, I know you got to spend it, but you can spend it on water, sewer, roads. We have roads that are deteriorating that we just had done. Couldn't that be better used there? I'm just making a comment from my understanding. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette Schleck. I live on Russell Avenue. I'd like to take a moment to address the resolution for the Ethics Committee from, on Councilman Schleck. I'm actually speaking behalf tonight as a wife and a mother. This whole incident has affected me greatly. I have never spoken publicly about it. This is, will be my once and only time that I will speak publicly on this and how it affected me and my family. I don't condone my husband's actions whatsoever. He has paid the price for it greatly. I've watched him in agony with this. I've watched him struggle with his own convictions of what he did. That was something completely out of character for him. And for that, my family has paid the price for his actions. I have been shunned because my name is Schleck. My children have been shunned because their name is Schleck. My child was used as a propaganda piece on social man, on social media with a picture that was taken from my husband's Facebook page without his permission because my husband took that picture here in City Hall with him. My two-year-old, now three-year-old, was used as a propaganda piece, a toddler. Why would you do that on a toddler? And my husband has apologized greatly. He has been hurt. I've been hurt. I've forgiven him for his actions deeply and sincerely, but I'm also proud of my husband. There are many things that my husband has struggled with over the last six months of balancing city council life, his master's program, a full-time job, and also raising a special needs child. It is not easy, and I can say this as I'm working a full-time child job and balancing the needs of that special needs child and our neurotypical child. It's not easy, but I am proud of him for all his accolades and accomplishments. And I beg of everybody in Allen Park to recognize that he is a good, decent person who made a very horrible mistake. We all have regrets in our life. Fortunately for many of us, our regrets are very deeply personal. His, unfortunately, is very public, and he will live to regret it every single day of his life. Thank you.
Charles Blown Champagne. Well, first I was going to also ask about, because it's been a couple meetings ago, I came up here and asked about that Wayne County grant, because I said it's been eleven months since we didn't hear anything, and I'm glad finally hearing an answer that they declined it. Because the other thing I was going to ask, because at the last meeting I saw in the admin report that you were going for another five million, so I was wondering if it was $10 million that we're going for for this one project. But that was one of my questions for that. Also, this property has been going on since two councils ago, 2019. Personally, that wall, all you really have to put is a white wall, put, welcome to Allen Park. I could see in green or black and all that stuff with a white background and put the city logo spy on it. There you go. Make it, and it's just, just something, because again, like I said in the past, our past councilwoman, she was all about art, and we need more art in our city. As I joked on the Allen Parker, I saw a picture of, they had a giant coffee mug that you can sit on, because we have so many coffee places now, just with that theme, but something to bring, something where you can have, like, the high school students can have a senior photo there, or we have all these art classes in the high school. They can be part of it, something. You have the display case at that pocket park, have the students paint the wall, or just, you know, bring the community together, just like how at the work session with the study session that, bringing the community together in this property. I hope that you guys talk to those businesses, like City Coffee House around over there, about behind, if this will, paving that area or putting grass would affect them. And I still believe that that back area should have lights, kind of like in Detroit has, down alley, so you have stuff happening at night as well, just ideas. Again, it's 2019, this piece has been, things, so it's been many years of development and stuff, so. But also through the chair to the mayor, you have two new council members. They might have a lot of questions, because when I first got on, I had a lot of questions too, so patience with those two. It's like, they're doing a great job as well, and everyone up here, and it's, remember, a year from, around this time, you guys filed to be up here. Remember why you're up here. You're working for the residents. You represent the residents 24/7, not just sitting up here. So just think about that. Support your local businesses. If you haven't gone to that Pink Garlic place, I recommend you go. Great place for lunch, dinner, but just stay optimistic because you never know what people are going through in their personal lives. So with that, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else is coming up. We'll close public comments, and we will move on to our consent agenda, which tonight consists of purchasing actions, claims and accounts in the payroll report, our finance actions, which are the finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet and cash flow, and a license to permit curbside pickup. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr. Second by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Come to our first resolution, which is to approve the Fire Department's request to purchase twenty-six sets of firefighter technical rescue turnout gear to include a coat, pants, boots, and gloves with the monies awarded by the firefighter turnout gear grant through Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation with a total award of $44,062 with no financial match by the city. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Taylor.
You guys have any questions? No, it's free money. It's going to be great. It's almost, it's a lightweight gear. So they are going to have to carry two gears, but it's like for MVAs. It's just lighter gear, so it's fantastic. I just, we had something written. For the past eighteen years, charitable donations have been a driving force behind Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation supporting the first responders and public safety organizations nationwide. On behalf of the City of Allen Park and the Allen Park Fire Department, I would like to thank Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for awarding the Allen Park Fire Department the equipment grant for over $44,000. It will definitely help the first responders and the necessary equipment to keep the community members safe. Once again, thank you very much, and that was a great job by Grant Peace that wrote it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to point, yeah, point out that it was Grant Peace that wrote the grant for the City Fire Department. That was mentioned a couple of meetings ago, and so grant, got to grant.
How appropriate. Are there any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is carried. Resolution two is to approve the appointment of Michael O'Loughlin to the position of Deputy DPS Director at a starting salary of $88,376.06, which will remain through June thirtieth, 2025, and include an annual clothing allowance of $750, an annual S3 license compensation of $300. and that would be S2 license 450 and S1 license 600, with an effective date of hire of April 29, 2024. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
If I may through the chair.
Yes.
So, uh, the process of the, uh, this was, it was advertised in the MML. We had three candidates that were interviewed by myself, Mayor McLeod, Councilman Dan Lloyd, Human Resource Director Tanya Whitehead, and DPS Director Tom Murray. We interviewed them, interviewed the candidates, and, um, strong recommendation was all for, uh, for Mr. O'Loughlin. He was currently our DPS Water Supervisor, Water and Drug Department Supervisor. He holds a, an associate degree from Henry Ford College. He is a graduate of the MPSI program. I think we talked about that a couple meetings back as well. There's a couple people going up to that program, so he's a graduate of that three-year program, and now heading into the, uh, to the graduate portion. He, uh, and that is through Central Michigan University. He has a S3 drinking water operator certification and a stormwater management certification. Uh, he is also a veteran of the US Army, and I did attach your, uh, his resume for your review. And, uh, already a member of the team, and I think he'll be a strong, continue to be a strong member of the team. Mr. O'Loughlin is here as well. I added in there with the S licenses, because he currently has an S3, but he is planning to go for an S1. So as, as he gets to that point, I just want to have that clarified. It was already in the resolution for deployment. And then that salary will go until, uh, June 30th, 2025, so he will, you will not see his name in the, uh, in the list for normally the appointment, appointments are in the June, one of the June meetings. He will not be part of that. This will continue on all the way through the end of that fiscal year.
And just to clarify, because that would include whatever, uh, that increase.
Correct.
Uh, through the chair.
Yes.
So I, I just want to add to that. Um, it was, it was a, um, pleasure to get a chance to meet Mr. O'Loughlin, or Big O, I believe, as has, he saved in the Mr. Murray's contacts, uh, through the interview process. Um, incredibly knowledgeable about, um, our city. Uh, I believe, uh, he has, through his time at DPW, has held almost every position that he possibly can in it. And, um, in, in the interview, we asked him flat out, um, you know, what, what's his long-term plans? And he said that I want to be the, the Director of Department of Public Works here at Allen Park. And unfortunately, uh, Mr. Murray has made it very vocal that his time is limited. Um, so I think that this is not only a, a great decision for now, today, but this is an investment in the future, um, and making sure that we have streets and safe drinking water, and, um, I cannot imagine a better person to trust that to than Mr. O'Loughlin, so just want to add that.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, since I've never met him, could he say?
Yes, I was going.
I'm seeing an audience.
Right.
And my understanding is he is the only one from Allen Park that applied?
He's the only internal candidate.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You might get asked to stand again. Any other questions or comments?
He also is the current Allen Park resident.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Congratulations, Michael. We are very happy to have you. Resolution three, to concur with the recommendation of the Festivities Commission and approve the purchase of external vests for the police department at a cost of $4,000. And that is from the Festivities Commission funds. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr, seconded by Ms. Nick, since you came in simultaneously. Yes, then move into.
If I may, if I may through the chair. Uh, this item here is just to concur with the, uh, recommendation from the Festivities. So basically, they're putting aside a $4,000 allocation, uh, because there are, uh, future, there's two needs for vests right now, and I think, uh, looking at it potentially for four, uh, for 16 more. So then they'll have the, uh, this is, they can go through and work with the chief, and we'll keep a, a spreadsheet on that as he goes through, and then we'll report back to Festivities if it needs to go through. This was something I believe, talking to the chair, uh, that was actually done a number of years ago, but they had not, uh, he did not think that they had formally approved it, and he wanted to make sure we had it. And I just bring it back here so everybody has a good record of it going forth.
Any comments or questions? Uh, I would make one, because I found it very interesting in sitting in on the meeting, and G V can mention. We think of vests as something that I think are just transferable, but apparently these are not. They are form-fitted to each officer, um, and, um, they, they stay with that officer the entire time they are here, uh, and they, they don't, uh, I think they might be able to take them with them. I'll let the chief explain. But I, I, it was very interesting to me, uh, the fact that, uh, you can have, have a number of these vests, but you can't just hand them off to the next person.
Just walked in with the carrying his vests.
Kyle's here too, so it's actually the outer carrier for the vests. Um, we put in, uh, Bill Miall, a professional development manager, puts in for the bulletproof vest grant. Um, we don't think that's going away, so the, the vest and one of their internal vests, what this would be is the external one. So we take that vest, put it inside, so the officers can put all their equipment on the outside, saves their back. It's pretty commonplace in police departments now. We hadn't budgeted for it, because Festivities granted us 44 vests, uh, down the road. We didn't get that many. Um, so what, instead of us buying one, submitting it, getting a receipt back, they decided it was smarter to just put $4,000 in account. And when that $4,000 is gone, I would assume the police department will budget for those vests going forward, is what, is my understanding. But they are the exterior vests that we, like I said, it's not just a morale issue. It, it helps their back, hits it off, and ours look very good. It looks just like a uniform shirt, so, um, we don't have that occupied force look, which is important to me, that we don't do that, so.
I'm gonna take a compliment here to the chief, that we've had to, you know, get a number of these new vests, because in the last, uh, three years, required 19 new officers.
Yeah, we, we have six in the academy currently. Um, we have, um, a, uh, a female officer is at the top of the class who's applied and interviewing with us next week. Um, so it really comes down, first time in a long time, we're able to say we're fully staffed, and we anticipate retirements in the next year and following. Um, so we're actually in really good shape, and I don't think I'd be able to say that a couple years ago, so, yeah. The contract that, that you guys all approved for the officers, it played a huge role in keeping officers and, and, and getting officers, for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution four, to accept the estimate job quote from Savon Cement, the current contractor, to repair the wall at the former Allen Park Theater site in an amount not to exceed $40,000, with funds from account 401-000-950-450. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, seconded by Mr. Barr.
Well, in case you had any questions regarding, uh, the wall repair. Uh, so it's a lot more to it than just going by and power washing it and painting, so it's gotta be scraped off. You probably noticed that there's mortar, tile on it, all that stuff that has to be scraped off, so that's very time-consuming. Also have to replace any brick or block that are missing, tuck point it, um, at the top of the wall, the last four feet of the wall. Um, he has, uh, the contractor has to add additional block to make it all, uh, in the same plane. So right now there's a missing block. So that's gonna, this price includes that. Um, flashing, uh, at the roof line, so no water intrusion happens with both, uh, inside, inside sonorama and limestone cap. And at the back of the building, it's just kind of rough, uh, taken down, so it's a lot of jagged edges. It's gonna get all cleaned up. Uh, so it'll be a more finished product. And you'll also notice on the Allen roadside where the brick was, has, came down during a demo, um, he's gonna do a saw cut right at the sonorama, uh, property line, and replace on the Allen Park side with like a, a cultured stone. And he's gonna prep all this, uh, the block wall for paint, and that's gonna leave it at that. Then we can determine what we're gonna do in the future, whether we're gonna do murals like, uh, Mr. Blevins suggested, but that'd be open for discussion down the road.
Any comments or questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
A, a couple here. I, I think that the first one, and this goes for both this resolution and the next one, to Ms. Kittle's point, and I think that this is important. Uh, the, the charter says that the bidding process is to be regulated by an ordinance that's put onto the books. If, if we're looking at the ordinance, there is a section, it's 2-824, exemptions from the competitive bidding process. I, 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 so I, so I mean, there, that, that this is, I'm, I'm looking at the municipal code right now. So it's section 2-8424, exemption from the competitive bidding process. Competitive bidding shall not be required, and one or more of the following exemptions apply. Number four, the city council determines that there would be no economic or other advantage to the city to seek competitive bids. This determination shall be stated in the council resolution authorizing the purchase, purchase. So, to my point that I made in the work session, and I, so to the point that I made in the work session, I wasn't saying that because this person is from Allen Park, we waive the bid process. I said because this person's in Allen Park, and they already do a great deal of work for the city, they are in a position to give us a more competitive bid than most other construction companies in the area, if not all. And that's something that if you look at it, like, if, if you are shopping at Sam's Club instead of going to Meyer, when you go to Sam's Club, you're able to buy in bulk, you buy something in large quantities, and therefore you're able to get a discount added, okay? Similarly, similarly, because this person has his crews in the city of Allen Park, because his trucks are in the city of Allen Park, because of his equipment is in the city of Allen Park. For all of those reasons, he does not have to pay. If we're paying for somebody from Canton, or somebody from Trenton, or somebody from Woodhaven, then we are paying for them to drive their equipment, to drive, we're paying for their workers to come here, okay? And that is all stuff that is ending up into our end process. So I just want to make it clear that this is not like we're, we're not giving it to a buddy. We're giving it to somebody that has done proven work for the city of Allen Park. This, the Savon Cement, we could go through, and I'm sure that off the top of Mr. Kibby or Mr. Murray's head, we could come up with, or even Mr. Fulton. He's done work for almost every single department in this city, um, the Kennedy Park. Um, he has, uh, I believe, didn't we just reconstruct a wall? Didn't he just do the, the wall over, um, a, a number of jobs? The moral of the story is, is that Savon Cement does quality work for the city of Allen Park. He has continually given us competitive pricing, and that is the reason why this is not the economic advantage to put this out to bid. I just, I want to make that, that point, um, very, very clear. I sure can. I, I know we're not supposed to, but I will say it once more. It is section 2-824, exemptions from competitive bidding. Number four. I, so I just want, I want to make that point clear, and I also want to make this point, uh, one more point clear about this one in particular. We'll talk more about the, uh, the parking lot and the, the seating next. That whatever we do, we are going to need to fix this wall. Like this, this is, this is going to need to happen. It doesn't matter what comes next in the process, that if, if, it doesn't matter what happens to that, this wall needs to be repaired. And I think that people have made some very, very good points. We are tired of looking at it. We don't want that to be that, and it looks, reflects poorly on the city. And this is, this is the first step to making this, this place, this, this piece of property appealing to the city of Allen Park and making it so that we can go to those next steps. Nothing can be done until we get number four done. So I just want to make that point very clear. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, uh, at the request of, uh, Mr. McGusson. Account number 401-000-950-450 is the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds. These were funds that came back, uh, to the city after COVID. Each city in the downward area got various amounts, um, and we still have our, some of our portion left. They have to be, um, committed by, uh, the end of this year. Obligated by the end of this year.
I don't know if I can do this, but through the chair, I've got one more point I gotta make. So sorry. Uh, one, one other thing, point I, I wanted to make to Mrs. Kittle's point, is that why, why is, yes, we have to spend it, but why are we spending it here? I think it's important to consider that this is, this ARPA funding is a one-time boon that we are getting from the federal government. And so you don't want to ta, put those one-time payments into things that you have to continually pay for the upkeep. Like the city of Allen Park, we just got, um, our budget that we are gonna have a special session on coming up in May. Everybody come there, it's gonna be a blast. Uh, Ms. Wirth's put a ton of work into it. But in that budget, we have money that is set aside every year into our annual budget that is going into the re, street sectioning program, that is going into our sewer program, and you can see those every year. I, I know, because people complain to me, like, oh, when's that gonna be opened up again, okay? So that is something that we are putting money into every year. This is like, if you, when you get your refund check, um, that's where you can kind of splurge and maybe, you know, get that, you know, upgrade to your camera, because that's not money that you're always gonna be counting on. Or maybe you can put that into your new bathroom project, so it's something that you can't always count on. I like to think of these things, it's very similar, the finances of the city is very similar to our own individual finances. Like the, the street and the sewer and the, and public safety, those are things that we are continually investing in. And in those very rare occasions where we get these, um, manna from heaven, when the federal government decides to give us, um, these funds, and this is not gonna be coming around again, we have to choose those places, because I don't know the next time that we are going to have access to funds to be able to put into public space like this. I don't know the next time that's gonna happen. Probably not in my, probably not in my tenure on this council, that we are gonna have a situation that we are getting from the American Rescue Plan. So that is why it is essential, it's crucial, that we are putting these ARPA funds into these things that otherwise get put into the back burner in the city, because we are putting money into public safety, because we are putting money into sewers, because we are putting money into streets. Now I'm done.
Anybody else? All right. Hearing no further comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed. Thank you. Resolution five. Resolution five is to accept the estimate job quote from Savon Cement, the current contractor, for the asphalt paving of the parking lot and creation of new green space at the former Allen Park Theater property for an amount of $154,650, with funds from account 401-000-950-450. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Who's going to speak on this one?
Looking at Matt. Matt's looking back at me. We're not making eye contact. Uh, this is a, the, so the, the first portion is the asphalt paving of the parking lot. So this will be the, um, the existing parking lot from the driveway entrance off of White Street to the driveway entrance, uh, or exit to Philomene. I guess it's an entrance exit that's in that way as well. From that, that point, um, east to the brick wall that's existing there. In, in the quote, it said 48 parking spots. I think it's actually about 72 parking spots, um, and maybe even a couple additionals here and there. So that would be, uh, full, uh, pulverize, pulverization, and then, uh, clean up, tar, matted down, and then put the asphalt on top of it, get a nice big finish, uh, on that, on that surface, and restrate it. The green space area would be the area that would be west of that now. So from that, uh, from that driveway, uh, line, so think about from the back of the existing, the old theater building, there was a parking lot that was closest to White Street. So from that point of the, of the rear of the, of the old building portion to the, up towards the alley that is behind Coffee House, a couple of the other, uh, Lumay and stuff like that, that would be the space that would be, um, have the asphalt, uh, removed, and then, um, put in topsoil, and then have it seeded, graded seeded. And there'd also be, uh, reseeding, regrading of the, of the area that was also part of the show. Uh, we had a vehicle that decided to try to go off-roading, uh, two vehicles apparently, then. One that definitely, I had pictures of.
Stuck.
It's, um, it was an ugly scene, um, but, uh, this'll be regraded, so that's not an issue. And then, and if there's anything else that can be, um, get that grass growing. And ideally would be able to get, uh, have the grass grow, uh, started as soon as possible, and then, uh, hopefully it would be ready for the end of the summer events. I'm not too sure, uh, if everything went well, Mother Nature helped out a lot too. Uh, maybe for the, the street fair, which would be in early August, uh, the first weekend in August, but maybe even, uh, some of the events later on would definitely be, could be hosted on that, that side. Never want to commit for anybody, but I, I did have a conversation with the DDA. If this did happen, would they eventually be able to move the, um, farmer's market back down to this area? It's been indicated that could be a poss, a viable option. I think it definitely would help them give a, a visibility off of the Allen Road section. This is that connecting point between these two streets of Allen Road and Park.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
Comment.
Certainly.
Chair. Um, I just happened to drive and walk the area. That parking lot is falling apart and I will, we need this, so.
Through the chair. I, I just want to say, everything that I said for the previous motion, I dittoed for this motion, it all applies here as well. Um, I want to personally apologize to, specifically Mayor Pro Temp Nick. She called me this Sunday, I misrecall. I, and I, and that's something that I need to be, do a better job as a council member, is making sure I'm communicating with my fellow council members. And I will do a better job of that. Um, I think to, to, uh, Councilman Bauer's point, it's something that absolutely needs to be done. I think that, um, historical and beautification both used that as a fundraiser last year and the year before for the street fair and we did quite well there. I think that Councilman Bauer would concur, the current state that it is, it would not be safe. It would not be prudent for us to, to do that same thing here for the, the, um, uh, for, for the street fair this year. Furthermore, I think that we've already talked about, there's been, um, businesses, um, in that area that have expressed an interest in that if we develop this area, that they would be interested in bringing their businesses to this area. Um, I think that it's one of those things that as, as we invest in the public infrastructure, if we give, if we give places for people to go, then they will go there. I think, um, uh, um, Ms. Wertz was, uh, quoting, um, uh, if they build it, uh, they will come. Uh, feel the dreams, alright, and so that making this space available, you seem like, is this something that we want to do? And then if, if it's successful, then going into the next step, maybe looking at putting a structure there. But I think that this is the, the best thing that we can do for our community here right now. And doing this right now, it doesn't close off any options in the future. So if people come and they hate it and they think it's an absolutely horrible idea, then it's not like we haven't fully committed to anything. All that we've done is, is we've put down some grass and we fixed a parking lot, two things that need to be done. And it's, again, it's going to make our city look better. I think that it's going to, once people see that there, I don't think that anybody's gonna want to give that space up. Um, I, I, I was daydreaming with my wife about walking down Park Avenue and maybe getting some ice cream and sitting in that park and listening to some live music. And it sounds like a truly wonderful thing. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, resolution is passed. Uh, other business, I believe this is, Mr. Mizzi?
Um. Mayor and council, um, I bring this before you as the secretary of the Board of Ethics, not as the city clerk. Um, as I explained to you in the work session, many of you asked where this, um, where this was during the process. However, for due process and protection of any falsehoods, it was kept pretty much out of light from the council. Everything was held in public, but they just, they were the judge and jury. So now they have made recommendations to you. So, um, I will, would you like me to read the correspondence? I, I mean, it does said, they were very specific on, uh, make a report and recommendation to council. So I am doing that on behalf of the Board of Ethics. The city attorney's office received an ethic, ethics complaint from citizen Dennis Hayes. And after review pursuant to Allen Park Code of Ordinances, section two dash one one five D, the complaint was forwarded on to the Board of Ethics Review Committee for consideration. So keep in mind, it was filed at the attorney's office to protect any falsehoods, any, any wrong accusations. It has to be reviewed by them for legal accuracy or for anything that would, like, libel slander. So then it goes to the, um, the review committee. And the review committee met on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four and unanimously agreed that the complaints allege a prima facie violation of the ethics ordinance to wit councilperson violated section one point zero one, principles one, three, four, and five. And pursuant to Allen Park Code of Ordinances, section two dash one one five D subsection three, the review committee forwards the approved complaint to the full Board of Ethics with the recommendation that the specific violations be reviewed and considered with the intent that the Board of Ethics consider report to the city council with the recommendation of discipline up to and including removal from office. That was the review committee recommendation to the full board. The full Board of Ethics met on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four and unanimously agreed that the councilman Schleck violated sections one point zero one, principles one, three, four, and five. And that additional complainants may be added to this and further recommend to the mayor and city council a public censure and any other action deemed appropriate and necessary. Now, there is also another report and recommendation they made to you that the Board of Ethics pursuant to section two dash one one four three recommend that the mayor and city council with assistance of the Legal Affairs Committee review the Ethics Ordinance Division Two Standards of Conduct and update the violation and penalties. And again, as I indicated, they are more than welcome to work with you on that. So, but I stand nowhere but with my report, um, that they do make a, um, public, uh, recommendation, so.
Thank you. In conjunction with the, the report that was received, um, I prepared a memo to council stating the process related to the ethics complaint filed against Councilman Gary Schleck has been completed and a recommendation made by the Board of Ethics. Based on the Board of Ethics findings and recommendation, I am requesting a motion to approve the attached resolution. Resolution reads, whereas it is the Allen Park City Council's expectation that public officials should seek to instill public trust and confidence in the integrity of government by acting in an manner which is above reproach and which avoids any conduct which could be viewed as improper or unbefitting a public official. And whereas certain actions by councilmember Gary Schleck prior to the two thousand and twenty-three elections violated the core values of the city and city council, demonstrated a lack of sound judgment and professionalism, and resulted in the filing of an ethics complaint by an Allen Park resident. And whereas Councilman Schleck's actions were deemed unacceptable by the Board of Ethics, which was convened as a result of the complaint, now therefore the following are adopted. One, the city council calls on Councilman Gary Schleck to publicly apologize to the people of the city of Allen Park, to Tony Lally and to Tim Estheimer for damaging election signs. Two, the city council publicly censures Councilman Schleck for his actions and behavior as recommended by the Board of Ethics in order to restore the public's faith in the integrity of each member of council and the integrity of the city. These resolutions shall be in full force and effective immediately after their passage and approval. I would ask if someone wishes to make a motion.
May I speak for Smear?
Yes.
Thank you. To my colleagues, Mayor Gail McLeod, Mayor Pro Temp Nancy Nick, Councilman Matthew Valaris, Councilman Dennis Marcos, Councilman Gerald Bard Jr., Councilman Dan Lloyd, City Clerk Michael Mizzi, and City Treasurer Tim Estheimer, as well as the honorable citizens of Allen Park. Today I stand before you, not just as a city councilman, but as a member of this community whose integrity has been called into question. In addition to my role in council, I'm a proud resident and homeowner in Allen Park. A devoted husband to my beloved wife Bridgette and father to our two sons. Some of you may or may not be aware of the sentence I received on January ninth. It was a sentence opposed by the court. As a first-time offender with a clean record, I accept the consequences with humility and resolve. But before I share the details of my sentence, I want to say I'm truly sorry to the citizens of Allen Park. I want to say that I'm truly sorry to Mr. Estheimer and his family. I want to say I'm truly sorry to Mr. Lally and his family. I want to say I'm truly sorry to the Hertz family. My sentence includes to be placed on probation with terms and conditions as ordered by the court. I have willingly submitted to all terms. To pay nine hundred and twelve dollars in court fines, I have paid all fines. To appear before the police department for fingerprinting, I have willingly appeared. To complete an anger management course, paid for my, by me in addition to the fines, I have completed the course and learned a great deal. To write apology letter to Mr. Lally and submit it to the court to be sent to Mr. Lally, I have written the letter and have submitted it to the court. To report any travels outside of Michigan, I have reported all travels. To have no contact with Mr. Lally throughout the entire term of probation, I have not contacted Mr. Lally. And to serve a hundred and twenty hours of community service at nonprofit organizations or agencies and provide proof to the court to be completed within a year of my court sentencing, I have started my community service hours. Today I have fulfilled each requirement to date except the hours needed. Today I have less than a hundred hours of community service yet still to complete. To the citizens of Allen Park, I offer my deepest and most sincere apologies for my disappoint, any disappointment, inconvenience, or distress my actions may have caused. As a member of this community, I understand the trust and respect that I have jeopardized and I'm truly remorseful for any harm inflicted. I'm committed to regaining your trust through transparency, accountability, and dedicated service to our city. Your forgiveness and understanding are invaluable to me. I pledge to work tirelessly, earn them back. As a Catholic, I find solace in forgiveness and striving for reconciliation. I open, extend an open invitation to us all as we navigate toward a brighter future together. In conclusion, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation for the opportunity to address you all today. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to make a motion? You motion? Does anyone want to second? Mr. Valerius motioned. I'll second. Any comments or questions?
Gary, I appreciate your words, okay? I think this is just a step, let's move on. I mean, if I have to say one thing, uh, you know, it ends today and for the rest of our time on, on council, uh, we move forward, working together, so.
Uh, to, to add to that, I, I called, called Mr. Schleck today and, and we talked and we talked about this. And, and that was the gist of our conversation. And I, I'm very appreciative of his words and of his wife's Bridgette, Bridgette in her own right. Um, does a tremendous amount for the city, serving on commissions and, and part of the Democratic Committee and all those things. And, um, very appreciative of, of them both. Um, I, I heard a priest actually say one time, that's what people's most common words under death, that are, I love you, thank you, and I'm sorry. And I think that those are most three important things that you can say in any situation. And the beautiful thing about apologies, and I tell this to my students, my wrestlers, everybody, is once somebody says I'm sorry and that apology is accepted, it's over. It's, it's off of both of us. It's like you cast a spell. It's, we don't have to carry it around with us anymore. And I appreciate your reference, I was also raised a Catholic. And there is that feeling when you leave reconciliation of, of having a weight lifted off of you. And so I, I'm very appreciative of your words and of your commitment to follow through and all, all of these things. And so hopefully we can conclude this tonight and move on. So, thank you, Gary.
Gary, I want to say, I'm with you, man. We have not, we were not friends technically, but we really not know each other. But I forgive you for that. Let's move on.
Okay. Uh, Gary, you and I have had many conversations about this. And, um, I told you how I felt, I was very upset at what you did. Um, through our conversations though, we've come to understand one another. And I do know that when you went through that anger management class, it did make a difference, uh, big difference for you. And I have seen the improvement and I have talked to Bridgette. And I know that you are trying very hard. Um, and so like Matt and everybody else has said, you know, um, put this behind us and let's move on and, um, work together to make this city better. Thank you.
Um, I, I would like to make a comment. This is probably one of the most difficult things I've, uh, had to, uh, deal with since I've been on council or mayor. And, um, I put this forth only beca, based on, on the recommendation of the Board of Ethics. Um, I, I checked with the court and I know that you have fulfilled and are fulfilling all of your obligations. And I'm very glad to hear that. I think, as Mr. Valerius indicated by virtue of your statement, you've pretty much done everything that's, that's in this resolution. And this is, to me, just a formality. Um, I think you have a lot that you can contribute to this community, Gary. And I would like to see you continue to do that. We take, uh, call for a vote on the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution's approved and we will move forward from this. Council comments, uh, this evening, um, Mr. Barker is to start, because Mr. Marcos is not here.
Okay, where do I start it? To Mr. Curry, Mr. McGusson, Ms. Kittle, Ms. Schleck, Mr. Blivins, thank you for coming up. I've, uh, I've only been on this council for, what is it, five months? It's different. I, I, I've been out there, I know what's going on. Uh, I know, I know some of your complaints, uh, you know, I've had. Been at restaurants with, uh, some of you, Mr. McGusson. I've been out in the community. I, 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 I know what you're saying, uh, but we're trying, you know, we're only human too. Uh, as for the, uh, Allen Road construction, I was out in it yesterday. I was stuck there for twenty minutes. I, all I can say is in what's four, five months, it's gonna be a lot better. I hope. Okay, as for some of the new businesses, I have not yet been to, uh, the Big B Garlic. But I have been to Caribou Coffee, it's pretty good, it's pretty good. Uh, considering I was, uh, going to be a Big B franchisee, so I'll, I'll give them, I'll give them that credit. For this week, um, well, yesterday, I was over at Champagne Park. I have to say thank you to, uh, Mario from Simone, or, uh, Savone Cement. I did watch him start doing some of the, uh, uh, construction there. Uh, I don't know, who's the, uh, ball field maintenance people? They were prepping the, the golf fields. They were prepping the golf fields.
There's a company called Durah Edge.
Durah Edge, they're doing great. And while I was leaving Champagne Park, I ended up seeing the, do, uh, uh,
Beolia.
Beolia. Uh, they were doing some inspections on one of the sort, um, system area over there. So I stopped in because I'm the alternate for it. I thanked them for what they're doing. They said that everything seems to be working fine now, uh, for that area. Other than that, I hope to be back here in two weeks. Uh, this has been a crazy, uh, last four or five weeks. I was in Florida and my car engine blew up. So I do have the vehicle back and, um, uh, I'll be here. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Slack?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, uh, before I go on to, uh, maybe not as long speech, uh, I, I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues that spoke and shared their feelings. And then I want to move on to, uh, talk about a few things. One, as you may know about me, I'm, wear a tie quite often and often my ties represent something. And today I'm wearing a puzzle piece tie which represents autism. So today as I speak to you, I'm filled with both the weight and challenges of the fire discrimination and my journey as a parent along with my wife Bridgette, for our son Gary Junior that, for those in the audience have seen run a couple times in here and saw me crack a smile. It wasn't that I took light of what was going on. It was that little guy just, he really makes you angry, he makes you happy, just does all sorts of things. But he's taught me a lot. He's taught me more in one lifetime than I can ever imagine to learn in five. But his story is just one out of countless others that are touched by autism. It's a reality that affects many of us within our own circles. And while President Biden recently marked World Autism Acceptance Day on April second last week, let us not confine our support to a single day, instead let's carry forward throughout April and beyond. Let it embrace understanding, acceptance, and not wavering support for individuals with autism and their families. Ignite the flames of compassion with our hearts, becoming advocates for their rights and dignity, whether it's my son Gary Junior or anyone else. Every person on this autism spectrum deserves to be recognized, respected, and most importantly, included. Together let's paint a future where acceptance knows no bounds and love reigns supreme. So before I go on and say anything else, please, please respect those with autism. I also wanted to say that this Saturday is a big day in our community. We're going to have Good Neighbor Saturday. That's going to be, uh, by the Beautification Commission. I'll be out there helping cleaning a big part of our community. Uh, we were going to stage at the high school, but now we will be staging at Benny Elementary. And that goes from ten AM to noon. Gloves and trash bags, uh, will be there. So you don't have to bring those, but if you have others that you want to bring, like a special pair of gloves you like, please bring them. And know if that you do a great job and come back, well, we got a big surprise for you because Detroit Wing Company decided to donate beverages and some wings. So that for no other reason would be a good reason to come out. So again, that is, uh, this Saturday from ten AM to noon at Benny Elementary, the parking lot. That's where the stage is. Other than that, I want to say special thanks to, uh, Dee Berry and those who organize cleanups that we've seen on Facebook, that those of you see. They've done a great job. Uh, if I would know more about that, please contact me. I'd be out there to clean because every cigarette butt and every bag of trash and everything that we could pick up helps us clean our community. But it takes all of us to clean our community, not just during these special cleanups. With that being said, I want to wish the students that are soon to be graduate, I'm not going to wish them happy graduation just yet, but, uh, breathe, you're at the end, uh, you're taking exams and you're taking SATs. I took the ACT. Now it's SATs, still confusing. Maybe my colleagues can explain more about that. But I wish you, for you to have a really great rest of your school year. I want to wish the Tigers the best start of their season. I want to wish the Red Wings and the Pistons the best remaining. And hopefully the Red Wings were, will get, well, they are in the playoffs. Hopefully they remain and keep that final spot. And finally, I want to say with the theater property that we voted on today, uh, to do that, I feel like we, I devoted for it initially when I was not in favor for it because I feel it's important that we develop that space. Our city's not meant to be walled off and have little quote unquote quasi prisons in the middle of our town, but to do some good action. But I will say this, and I will publicly say this, as I said to Mr. Hayes many times in the last year, uh, we will have some sort of forum that will address citizen comments. We will have hear you out. This is not the final step, at least for me. I'm only one vote of many, but for me personally, this will, I will continually make sure that we do something more with that. Because I do believe that spot is necessary in our town, that we have a place that we can come together. And I think you've heard me way too much today, so I'm going to shut up and wish everyone a great day and hopefully, if there's any time left, enjoy this beautiful day. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I, I first want to, um, say that, uh, with, with my new term, I have a new seat. And, uh, although I miss sitting next to Mr. Valerius, there's a lot of advantages sitting next to the city clerk. It's like you're sitting right next to the referee. It's really nice. I can ask him for, for, uh, those questions. It's been very helpful. Appreciate you, Mr. Mizzi. Appreciate you. Um, I, I want to say thank you to everybody that came up for council comments today. Uh, Ms. Kittle, I, I genuinely do appreciate it. I, I do. Because if you're, you're, you have these questions, other people's do, and it's really important that we are, have, that's what these are for. That, that's why we have this and this is what we talked about when, when people were talking about a public forum is that, well, we have a public forum the second and the fourth Tuesday, and it's these exact situations so that we can address people's concerns. There is one concern that you brought up that I didn't address though, and I want to do that, um, regarding the DDA. That is something that came up in our conversation regarding this property. And the, the answer that I'll give you is, is that there will, the time will come when we will ask the DDA for something. But I, it's, it's, again, to give you another home finance one, it's like when you, when you have to ask your parents for something really big, you want to make it something that you really want, like, you know? So we want to make sure that when we go to the DDA, so Mr. Hughes, we're, we're going to be coming eventually, we want to make sure it's the thing that we want. So that, we're not done with this property. We know that there's things that are going to happen in the future depending on what these next six months hold. So, um, that, I just wanted to address that one issue. To, um, it's Mr. Curry. I, first thing, I do want to just address one, I, I, I know that you said you didn't want anybody to, to, um, I don't, I don't want to rebuff anything. I just want to address some of the concerns, specifically one thing I just want to say. HR committee did talk about the cameras, but when we talked about them, our primary concern was making sure that the previous director no longer had access and logins to those because it was well known that he had access to those in his personal, in his personal computer. We wanted to make sure that for the safety and the security of the city and our employees, that that individual no longer had access to it. Now, considering that, one thing that I, I want to acknowledge and recognize is something that I have not heard just from you is that under the previous, uh, previous director, I understand that there was a culture of, of eavesdropping, of, of people being concerned about what to say and when to say it, and, and all of those concerns are being brought up. And being a part of that culture, I can understand that almost that feeling of trauma, like of that being something that's continued. Uh, this is something I talked with, uh, co, uh, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Nick, um, prior to last council meeting. I was actually on spring break in Florida. I was sitting on our, our Fenchton Veranda with the ocean in the, and ocean in the background. It's, it's something that we take seriously. I addressed them with Director Fulton. We had a lengthy conversation. And he, he assured me, we walked through step by step every, basically all of these, these issues that you said. And he has assured me that these are things, that there was one incident where we had two of our, um, young staff members, seventeen, eighteen year olds that were being verbally harassed by, uh, a, um, a, um, a customer. And in that instance, they put on the audio so that they could see that, but other than that, all the audios were turned off. He has made sure that he's gone through and changed the passwords so that only the certain people, well, I, I'll, and I'll, so, I, I, I just want, I want to make sure that I, I address it to the public because you brought it up in here, so I want to make sure. And I'd be happy to continue the conversation with you and me after that. I just want to make sure that, and, and again, we'll talk afterwards and I, and I, I will take everything, all your, all your accusations very seriously. These are very serious things. I want to say up here that, um, uh, Director Fulton and Deputy Director Carr have my absolute confidence. They have assured me that these, that these issues, um, from the previous director have been addressed and they have my confidence. So, but I, I'd be happy to talk with that further with you, Mr. Curry, and I, and I appreciate you coming up and bringing in your concerns.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, you are out of order, sir.
So, Ray, always appreciate you. I, I have, uh, I have to say that every once in a while when you get up, my heart drops to my stomach, so I'm not sure. But it's nice when you come up with some good news. So thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And to, I'm going to still, to Councilman Blevins, because you, you, you never lose that title. I, I have so much respect and admiration that even though he is no longer serving up here, his passion for the city has not, um, dwindled. I, I too, uh, worked with, um, Councilwoman Syke and I very, very much appreciate his commitment to her passion and her vision for the city. And I think that that's something that, um, with your commitment and, um, I think that that's something that is not lost on us and it's, we will be sure to honor her, um, in that space and many other spaces around the city. And to Bridgette, um, I don't know if you were in here when we were talking. I, I am, I'm very appreciative to you personally for all that you do for this city, um, and, and to your family. You, you, you do so much, um, not only in supporting Gary and what he does up here. And I know from, you know, my own wife that it's not easy to be a wife of a councilperson, as I see another wife of a councilperson back there. It's not, it's, it's a job in itself, but in your own commitment to the Historical Commission and all the other things that you do for our city, um, very appreciative of it. I, I know that it was not easy to get up here and say those things, so it's from the bottom of my heart, I, I appreciate that courage. On a positive note, on a very positive, it's all positive. I was on a jog this Sunday, uh, yes, and I, I ran into, uh, Mr. Prota outside the, uh, Historical Museum. And he had a chance to, um, show me around in there and I, and I was blown away. I honestly, when I found in, in our municipal committee that those bins had been removed, I was flabbergasted. Seeing what that, what that building was like before and the fact that they were able to go through all of those artifacts into all the Historical Commission. I know it wasn't just you. It's every Sunday for a series for a long time, making that works done. And, um, had a chance to go through there and more than just cleaning out the clutter, but what I was impressed on me was, is that there's a vision for that space. And we've had that property for a long ni, time, a couple of decades now. I, I finally, like walking through with you, I, I see the vision. And I, again, daydreaming with my wife, I, I have that vision of like a summer day, taking my little son, walking up there, she's around the corner from where we live, and being able to take a walk through Ellen Park history. So I'm so appreciative to the efforts of the Historical Commission and all that you've done. And I can't wait to see that that, that museum finally come to fruition. I'm positive I'm missing something. It'll hit me as I'm dra, pulling on the driveway, but I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nick?
Okay, well, I have a couple shout outs tonight. There was a grand opening for the Studio Salon Suites on Champagne Park. They're a new business and with their grand opening. Also Valoom, um, I think I'm pronouncing that right, um, over here on Allen Road. They had their thirteenth year anniversary in our city, so congratulations to them. And then, um, we had a, a student commissioner for the historical last year, Zach Merrick, so happy birthday. Today is his birthday. But I also want to say he is coming back, Mr. Prota, for the summer, so he will be here to help you, um, with the historical. So he's looking forward to that. He texted me today and said that, you know, he wants to help you out. And then, uh, since we're talking about the historical, uh, when I ran for council, I was asked by a resident, what would you do if people didn't want to come to a city council meeting? Because people don't want to come up here. They don't want to be filmed. They can't talk in public, which, you know, is a number one fear for people. And I just wasn't thinking. I just said, oh, council on the corner, you know? So we are actually going to start that on Friday, um, April nineteenth at the Historical Museum. And actually the police, um, were going to come and they're going to, the honor guard is going to do a demonstration of the flag ceremony. Um, and then the historical chair, Mr. Prota, is going to talk about the grants. And you cannot go in the building, so it's, it's got, you can't go in yet. But we're going to have it out front. There'll be snacks, refreshments. There'll be some giveaways. So, um, again, Friday, April nineteenth at six o'clock, so I hope everybody can come. And I think that is about all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius?
All right, just a couple of things. I want to again congratulate, uh, Mr. Olafland for his, uh, Deputy DPS Director position. Congratulations with that. A couple other things just to Jerry and Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Nick. You could call me, okay? Call and text me. I know you do. But Jerry, same thing, okay? I know how I felt, uh, when I was new up here. You know, just an, an example, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, get any easier or simple. In the last two days, I've responded to residents' questions about dog parks, splash pads, waiting pools, a skate park, a roller rink, parking lots, road construction, and summer activities for children. Okay, uh, so again, it's continuous as time going. And my response, my end response to the questions I could answer and couldn't answer were simply to continue asking questions, reach out. Pink garlic, butter chicken? Motor City meat pies? It's, I don't know why they opened right on my corner because now I could walk there all the time, but that thumbs up to them as well. I went over there and talked to them and ended up ordering like three of them. Just, I just wanted to, yeah, they're very delicious, so. Again, thanks everyone for coming up and talking. And Ray, I hope your sinuses feel better and, you know, you look, you're looking miserable over there. Uh, and, and kind of to, to hash on, uh, Councilman Lloyd Charles. Love seeing you. I mean, I'd like to say it's like you never left. I love seeing you. For those that don't know, uh, my son works with Charles, uh, at the Henry Ford. And one of the questions I ask my son every day is, how's Charles Blevins doing? And, uh, I like just the, you know, your dedication to the city and you coming up here and just remaining a part of what you were doing before you were on council, while you were on council, and even after you've left council, just continues. Like I said, a lot of citizens could take notes, uh, just based on your contributions to the city. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Astheimer?
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens. I just wanted to let you know that I have a, uh, I won't be at the next council meeting. There's a training, uh, in Mount Pleasant. I'll be there for, uh, with the Michigan Municipal Treasurers, Treasurers Association. So I will not be able to be at the next meeting. And, uh, I wanted to thank the, uh, work of the Board of Ethics as well as all of our committees. Thanks for, uh, your work for the city of Ellen Park. And lastly, and most importantly, I wanted to say publicly that I accept Mr. Slack's apology and wholeheartedly forgive him, uh, for his actions. Uh, I also appreciate and sympathize Bridgette's comments. Thank you for coming up tonight. And with that, I'll say God bless you all and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi?
Thank y'all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Slaughter Record. Just a couple of things. The, uh, reference to, uh, to art, um, I wish it was as easy as, uh, and people know, we have tried to involve, um, the schools. We have tried to involve the art departments. And I can tell you that, uh, the members of the Ellen Park Citizen Civic Fund, which are responsible for the display board at the Pocket Park, have gone to extreme measures to try and get some kind of art in there. When we first installed that, when the APCCF first installed that board, uh, we had a, uh, uh, an agreement with the art department at the high school and that quickly, um, disappeared. And, uh, so we've, uh, had our vice president that's been out there. And, uh, so we've, uh, had our vice president that's been out there pounding the pavement and, uh, beating on the doors of his neighbors and, uh, stopping people walking by, saying, hey, do you have any kids or grandkids? And, um, so if anyone out there has any art that they'd like to, um, provide, uh, please contact Mr. Wirtzbacher, uh, who would be more than happy to, uh, d- display your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, um, anyone's art. More, more than happy. But we, that had crossed our minds too, as far as that wall. I mean, I even made the comment, uh, if I could find someone who does some of this beautiful graffiti that uses it periodically on railroad cars, um, you know, uh, pay them to do that, because there are some real artists out there. A little more clarification on that vacant property. It is in the DDA, but the DDA does not own it. That is owned by the city, which is why it is being handled the way it is handled now. But I'm sure that in the, um, approach that we have taken to everything in this community, about, uh, working as a team, that we will continue to work as a team and that the DDA will eventually be involved as they have become more and more involved with other things within the city, including minor things that may not mean a lot to a lot of people, but just paving of alleys, it means a lot to the businesses and the overall appearance. And quite frankly, uh, we heard from a businessman who sits on the DDA that, uh, even those little things affect the neighborhoods. When you, when you asphalt over gravel, um, you reduce the dust and, and it, and it has an impact on the neighborhoods. The, um, the length of that process, of course, was impacted by COVID, so we, we got the property in two thousand nineteen and then everything hit a standstill. So, hopefully, as we have done, um, in the past eight years that I've been involved, uh, as an elected official, we've made some major strides in this community. Again, for some people who may be new here, we were in a temporary city hall, uh, for forty years, uh, which gives a new definition, uh, meaning to the word temporary. Uh, but we are here, we have a new DPS facility, uh, we're working on improving our fire station, uh, our library. At some point, um, uh, we will probably end up with a dog park. Rusty the dog said he was getting a little lonely the last time I was by there. And one thing that Mr. MacDusson commented on that I really appreciated, uh, I want to thank you for recognizing the DPS because sometimes they are our unsung heroes, especially in the middle of winter when they're down in the trench with a broken water main. But I think what really struck me was his observation that he couldn't tell who the supervisor was and that no one was micromanaging. And I cannot emphasize that fact enough. When an organization works well and people work well together, you let people do the jobs for which they were hired and you don't micromanage them. If you're gonna do that, then you didn't need to hire them in the first place. You could do it all yourself, but that's impossible. So, your main objective, from my viewpoint, is to make sure that you've got the best qualified people in place and then you let them do their jobs. And whether that's department heads or on commissions, I've seen it over and over again. When you've got the right people working on commissions, you get a lot done, and they are very much appreciated. I think everybody else has covered virtually everything else. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
This time it's Nancy Nick and Gerald Barr, in that, or, Mr. Slack, okay, well, it came from the right. So Nancy Nick, second by Gerald, by Gary Slack. Two G's in a row, I, I don't know, we're gonna have to change initials around here. At any rate, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we adjourned at seven thirty-seven.